I'd like to call it a February meeting to order. Kathy, please do the roll call.
Mrs. Burstow, I am here.
Mrs. Tunny?
Here.
Mrs. Oost?
Here.
Mr. Andreessen?
Good evening.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Alinsky?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
Whereas we just took the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is a student spotlight. We like to highlight the students. So we have a 4th grade poetry presentation. Not sure who's going to lead that.
I will.
All right, Dr. Johnson.
I am honored tonight to introduce some of our very talented 4th grade poets. We have five students from our 4th grade class that will be presenting their original poems as well as an informational presentation regarding the inspiration of their poem. So this, what they'll be showing for you tonight was part of the Module 1 Performance Task as part of our new ELA program. In that particular module, students synthesize their learning about what inspires poets to write poetry by studying poets. But then most importantly, they wrote and present their own original poems inspired by something that was meaningful to each child. They then had to write and present a speech, including the use of visuals, to share what inspired their poem and where you will see evidence of this in their poem as well. So we have, again, five students this evening who will be showcasing their talents as poets in our 4th grade class. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McAtee, who will introduce our students and get us started.
Exciting. When Dr. Johnson and we were discussing this, I was just like, oh heck yeah, let's get those kids up there. They did such an awesome job. We went into all the classrooms. We heard so many poems. Tremendous. And kudos to the teachers for all their hard work with the students. But these kiddos are really just top-notch. So, we're going to go ahead and get started. As Dr. Johnson said, we have five. So our first one to come up is Lorenzo Ullrich.
My memories. That's my voice.
You got it.
My memories. Really scared.
Okay. There you go.
I was, my memories, I was a happy kid. Scared. My memories, I was a happy kid through first to third. 4th grade is one of my... Really scared. One, my memory got the best of me. My memories got me at the wrong time. I was happy too sad. Four years of being in school in my life never be the same. This is my poem about my, of my memories. Ends upside down. Upside down. What inspired me? My poem is about my memories. I was inspired to write about this because I never met my grandpa and I miss, I never conveyed this through my words choice. I chose this picture because it is a picture of my grandpa before he died. What, you, what, where you see ins- inspiration in my poem? The reason I wrote this poem is so people don't remind me of what I lost. Upset, I, it upset me when I heard friends talking about their grandpas when I don't have one. In my poem, I said, "I was happy too sad in four years of being in school" to describe how hearing other students talk about their grandpas affected me. I also wrote 4th grade is one, memories got the best of me to expl- explain that I overheard these students on my first day of 4th grade. And I met, and it made my, it made me really sad. I used this phrase, "My life will never be the same", to show that my memories will always haunt me. Choose, chose this picture because it shows how I feel when I hear my friends talking about their grandpas. In conclusion, the reason I wrote this poem is so people don't remind me of what I lost. I'm upset, upset, my grand, my, my friends were talking about their grandpas when I don't have one. My poems that, my, in my poem, I said, "I was happy too sad in four years of being in school" to describe how hearing other students talk about their grandpas affected me. I also wrote 4th grade, 4th grade got the best of my memories to, got the best of me to explain, "I overheard students on the first day of 4th grade" and I heard the same to show that my poem, oh, oh, my, my memories will always, I use the phrase, "My life will never be the same", to show that my memories will always haunt me. I chose, I chose this picture because I believe in my grandpa is my guardian angel in heaven. And that's the poem.
All right, our next student is Chickie Castillo. Chickie, come up.
My, my pretty parents. My dad and I play and study together. My dad and I love each other. He's the best dad in the world. Dad is always with me. Mom is my, mom is always with me, with me, in my mind. I wish she was still alive. Mom would love watching me play in soccer, basketball, sharing stories and funny jokes. Mom and dad loves to see me happy with a smile. Your heart is my heart. My heart is yours, dad. You are amazing and, and wonderful. Mom, you are my heart and never go away. Love both in my little heart. My poem, my poem, "My Pretty Parents", is about my lovely dad and mom. I, I'm, I'm inspired by my mom, by my dad and my mom because both are amazing. I have explained this instruction of five instances and three lines. I also use imagination to show the reader how much I love my parents. My parents are so close to me, which is, which is why I wrote my poem about my dad. My dad and I play and study together. At home, I spend time with my dad, play and then study English and math. I go together because I spend a lot of time with, of my time with dad doing everything. Mom is always in my mind. I wrote this line in, in my poem because I always think of my mom. I use this word in my mind to tell the reader that I love my mom forever. I was, I was inspired by my mom and my dad. They love me and I love them too. Dad is always with me and mom is in my mind. The words I have chosen in my poem is what I have learned in English. I hope the poem inspired you to learn English and shows you how much I love my parents.
And then she has her pictures up here. I just need to share this. Chickie came to Mokina just a little over, maybe a year and a half ago, not speaking any English. And for her to be able to put these poems together and to have all this proof, it's just tremendous. She's come such a long way. All right, next, we have Rory Cox.
Can you do it?
You can do it. Okay.
The art room. Splatter, clatter, scoop up the paint, paint with your finger. Shovel up the paint, paint with the paintbrush. Swish, swoosh, swish. Colors and covered canvases fill the room. The paintings on the wall give it personality and a sense of amazement. As I actively paint and amazingly turned out astonishingly. As I suspend it on the wall, the room lights up even more. The art room is overflowing with wonder endlessly. My poem, "The Art Room", is about painting. I was inspired to write about painting because I love to paint and some people think I'm very good at it. I also do it pretty often and painting is a way to calm myself. So I've explained this through the words I used in the pictures I drew. I wrote swish, swoosh, swish, and I was inspired to write this because that is what I hear coming from the canvas when I paint. I used the word swish, swoosh because I wanted to describe how painting sounded to me. Also, in the line, "Colors and covered canvases fill the room", I was inspired to write this because the paintings are very colorful. And I wrote the words "fill the room" because the art room has some painting. Another phrase I wrote is "the art room is overflowing with wonder". And I was inspired to write this because the place that I painted personally, I think is an amazing place to be. And I chose the words "overflowing with wonder" because I wanted to show how amazing the place is in a stronger way. I, the words I chose in my poem were chosen to help you imagine what, where I paint looks like and how my art style looks. I also hope that it inspires you to try painting if you haven't and to respect the process of painting.
All right, you know, clearly, these, these kids all have something that truly inspired them, you know? And I don't know about you guys, but in 4th grade, I would have never used words like that. So, it is pretty amazing. Our next will be Windsor Diamond.
This is my poem titled "Art". Art, art, wash the colors blend, yellow, blue, green, and red. See the colors brighten the canvas. Hear the brush slap the paint. Smell the sweetness of the cookies the colors made with the paint. Art, art, wash the colors blend, yellow, blue, green, and red. My poem "Art" is about the beauty of painting with colors and how you can create shapes just by using your imagination. I was inspired to write about, about art because I think art is beautiful the way you can blend the colors together and create shapes just by using your imagination. I have conveyed this through the imagery, the imagery and repetition of my poem. I wrote "art" because of the love of it and the freedom I feel doing it. Art was meant for me. My poem "Art" is about how beautiful it is when you blend colors together and how you can create shapes just by using your imagination, which is why I wrote, "Art, art, wash the colors blend, yellow, blue, green, and red." I describe how blending colors together can create different colors like yellow, blue, green, and red. I chose the word "blend" to describe this more precisely. Also, the way the colors move seen the bright in the canvas. So I wrote, "See the colors brighten the canvas." I chose the word "bright" to describe how the colors brighten the canvas so much, looks like the paint is almost gone. Another example is in the line, "Smell the cookies the coloring with the paint." This describes how your mind can create shapes just by using imagination. I chose colors made with the paint to describe the shapes colors can make with paint. I was inspired by the beauty of blending colors together and how you can create shapes just by using imagination. I communicated this inspiration through my poem by using precise word choices, imagery, and repetition. I hope to one day pass my love of art under someone by either teaching them or showing my artwork.
And our next poet is Mia Nguyen.
Music is super fun. I hope I'm not the only one. There's instruments like the oboe or flute, but all of them make a lovely tune. There's, there's different genres of music too, like jazz, pop, rap, and white noise. Ooh, a xylophone can make a ding, and a microphone you can sing. Music can mix with your emotions like a witch loves potions. They can change how you feel like a yummy happy meal. But really, if, if it's not for you, you can listen to music too. I know that music's really fun, but I know it's not for everyone. My poem "Musical Arts" is about music. I was inspired to write about this since I've been a musician for years and I love it. I've explained this through imagery and rhyme. I was inspired to write about music because I've been a musician for years. I was playing with Ishmids at school and I played with a xylophone and a microphone, which is why I wrote, "A xylophone can make a ding, and a microphone you can sing." I chose "can make a ding" and "you can sing" because those are the things that you can do with them. I think that there are different types of musics that can make you feel a certain way, which is why I wrote, "Music can mix with your emotions like a witch loves potions." I chose "like a witch, like a witch loves potions", and I know that witches like making potions. Music can change your emotions quickly depending on what you are feeling and that's why I wrote, "They can change how you feel like a yummy happy meal." I chose "like a yummy happy meal" since they are so delicious that it might make your day better. I got inspired to write about music and I love being a musician and I've been one for years. The words I've chosen in my poem can clearly explain why I love it through imagery and rhyme. There are many different instruments that are unique in their own way. I hope my poem inspires you to at least try to play an instrument that is right for you.
Aren't they awesome? Aren't they awesome? Can I have all five of you guys come back up here? Come on. Okay, congratulations all then, but they all left, so, uh... But still, congratulations to them if they, on, on the recording. They did a great job. You know, like Mr. McAtee said, you know, 4th graders, to get up in front of a bunch of adults to talk, it's pretty stressful, so, to say the least. Okay, so next, we're going to move on to public comment. And I would say that for the folks that have been following the board for a long time now, there is a slight change. You'll see that it's just public comment. So, just want to kind of explain, you know, the, the change, per se. So, the board met, had a workshop on January 31st with Natalie Williams-McMahon, who is District's IASB Representative, which Illinois Association of, of School Boards. And in that meeting, we talked a lot about best practices and things like, you know, governance of the board and things like that. And in one of, there's a pre-conference that Natalie had with Dr. Cohen and I, where she had done some research on the district. And one of the things that she had brought up in that meeting was that our format of public comment was highly unusual and that she advised against it. It's not best practice in that. Unfortunately, the, the workshop, we couldn't discuss in the workshop. We ran long. It was a three-hour workshop. We actually kept her for three and a half hours. So, we didn't get to it unfortunately. So, what we did instead was Mark, Dr. Cohen, reached out to the board, let him know that Natalie Williams suggested this. And, and here are some of the comments that she had said out there. For best practices, these groups are also from the public. Therefore, you may allow them their three minutes of time according to your agreements protocols regarding public comment. It is best that you do not respond, especially if it is on the agenda under public comment and is not board-related business. This will allow you to be consistent with all constituents that speak during public comment with no expedations that the board will respond during public comment. In addition, you may vote, write, and have visuals to let the public know that you will not respond to any group giving information during public comment. Historically, I've said that, past presidents have said that as well. She also followed up a little bit later and said, "I also wanted to add that because you are all nonpartisan and you do not want to represent favor for any person or group, it is best practice that you do not allow groups to be added to your agenda. Therefore, allowing them to speak during public comment is okay, but not giving them, not giving time to a specific person or group on your agenda. This helps you legally as well, keeping the public body or any person in your district from wanting to throw emails, messages accusing you of playing favoritism." So, with that best practice guidance, we have made the change and we will move to public comment. The same rules apply. You, three minutes. We do have a shot clock. It's almost March Madness, so we're getting some March Madness themes here. We'll do that, three minutes, and we'll start with that. So, first up is Jen Francis.
No, but I might cry and nerves. I don't think I'll need three minutes, but if I do... I am Jen Francis. I am a mother of a student at MES. She's in pre-K and I just wanted to say thanks to, I'm, I'm going to steal your thunder, so I'm not going to go into too much, but to Principal Chorley, there was an event two weeks ago held at the school. I know it's in your agenda, so I'll let you go into details. But when we got the invitation, I was a little apprehensive. It was scheduled on the Wednesday that there was early dismissal, which meant no school for pre-K. So, in addition to that, it was 6:00 at night, which is witching hour in my household with a four-year-old. So, I was like, whoa, this is going to go. One way or the other, it was an incredible turnout. It was really the first time that the pre-K families were united as, like, all six classes. So it gave us an opportunity to talk amongst each other as families. But it also gave the kiddos an opportunity to socialize, which, they're all COVID kids. So I'm sure if you look at their IEPs, social workers on there. So just wanted to say thank you to your team. I know it was an incredibly long day. I don't know all the volunteers, but we had, the teachers were there. I know Ms. B, the social worker, was there. And then we had Scribble Monster, which we, again, we're like, who, what, what is Scribble Monster? He was an incredible musician. All of the kids were engaged. If you can think of like six, I don't know total enrollment, but six pre-K classes. The special ed kiddos were just as equally as engaged. Music is universal. So, I don't know if this is something that we could consistently have on the calendar. My husband and I had even suggested, like, maybe it's a pay-per-family, you know, like, I don't know if you want to call it a dance-a-thon or something. And he said that we would even sponsor the pizzas. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next up is Erin Min.
No, I have timed it. I've done, it'll be, that'll be good. I've practiced. Good evening. I am Erin Min. Among other things, I'm a resident and parent in the district. On Sunday morning, I wrote the school board and Dr. Cohen. Dr. Cohen replied, answering some of my questions, but missed some as well. I followed up, but had not heard back yet. Because the board responsibilities center around policies, my questions center around policies. I'm sharing the correspondence today for transparency, starting with my last question. Can I assume that policy 2140 will be followed with Dr. Cohen or Desneys sharing, answering my questions at the board meeting Wednesday? Is that the same section of the agenda as FOIA? Dr. Cohen replied, "Regarding policy 2140, all board members received your question when you sent your email. They are also being copied on this reply." I followed up with, "Regarding policy 2140, that's great that the board has been included in this communication. Can you please confirm that my questions and the district replies will be included in the board meeting?" As the policy states, "The superintendent or Desneys shall ensure that the homepage for the district website contains an active electronic link to the email addresses for the school board and during the, the board's regular meetings, report for the board's consideration. All questions or communications submitted through the active electronic link along with the status of the district's response in the board meeting packet." It does not state that if the board is CCed, that the policy of reporting, updating the status, and including the board meeting packet at the board's regular meetings is no longer applicable, or am I missing that? I'd also talked about the communication section being updated today and Mr. Bush explained how, I mean, but Dr. Cohen answered that as well. But Mr. Bush explained it to everybody, so I'm not going to repeat that. The only thing I'll add to that is that, Dr. Cohen had said that all the groups that had time reserved on the agenda in the past will continue to have the opportunity to address the board during public comments. And I'm just hoping that board members are included as being public because I don't know if there's a gray area since they're, this is their meeting. A question that was missed was, "Why does public participation at board meetings on the school district's website, which I linked, include some guidelines that are not adopted or published in sections 2200 and 2230, public participation at school board meetings, and petitions to the board on the policy website? I understand highlighting and not including every guideline, but not also, but also not adding additional ones not approved by the board's policy." Lastly, another of my questions regarding policies and who writes and revise them, Dr. Cohen confirmed that it's the board that does so. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Next up is Amanda Montgomery.
I don't bring paper, so sorry. Sure, I guess, yeah. I'm Amanda Montgomery. I am a resident of Mokina. I've been here, I don't know, 10 years, probably. And then before that, like, my whole life. So, my daughter is a new kindergartner. I say new, but we're halfway into the school year. "I am a firm believer in kids do well when they can." That's a quote from Dr. Ross Green. "I'm a firm believer in this as well as undesirable behavior as a form of communication of needs not being met." To pivot with that, it took a while from our own personal experiences, but finally, we believe we have the right mix of support, accommodations, and staff. So, we would like to thank our IEP team for being patient and understanding, including but not limited to, and I'm probably missing people, Ms. Bree, Mrs. Carey, Mrs. Chorley, Mrs. Volpe, Mrs. O, Ms. Trish, Mrs. B, Ms. Stuck, Dr. Lucas Niehi, et cetera, if I missed anyone. And then we are also sad to hear that we will be losing Ms. Bree, but would like to congratulate her and wish her the best on her new adventure. And then also, unrelated, I would like to, or I'd like, I look forward to hearing about the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee in the spring. to hearing about the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee in the spring. And lastly, I would like to leave the board members with a quote from Profiles in Courage, which if you haven't read it, it is a great book. Great political leadership requires not only the willingness to take risks, but also the strength to withstand the consequences of those risks.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Next up is the MTA.
Good evening. If you guys are enjoying the nice weather. Tonight, we have spotlight on ELL and the third grade team. We'll start with ELL with Mistriano.
I'm going to need more than three minutes. I'm Cindy Strino. I'm the ELL teacher at the junior high.
And I'm Courtney Schindler. I'm the ELL teacher at MES. We would like to start out with extending our heartfelt congratulations to Nasserine on receiving the Early Career Educator Award. Working alongside her is a true honor. We take immense pride in her and her unwavering dedication that she demonstrates to the students at Mokina 159.
I am grateful for the opportunity to address you today regarding the process of ELL, the ELL department. As we navigate through the school year, it is essential to reflect on the achievements and the challenges faced by our ELL students as we support their educational journey. At the beginning of the school year, we organized an informative evening tailored to our ELL families. This event served as platform for parents to meet our dedicated ELL teachers and administrators, acquaint themselves with our ELL program, understand the ins and the outs of access testing, and foster community bonds over some pizza. It was heartening to witness the engagement and the enthusiasm from our ELL families, highlighting their commitment to their children's education. In the fall, ELL teachers and general education teachers collaborated closely and engaged in professional development sessions centering on co-teaching for English learners. These sessions were led by Andrea Hunsfeld, a distinguished author and leading authority in ELL education. Her invaluable expertise helped teachers navigate through different co-teaching strategies, empowering us to collaborate effectively and seamlessly. In January and February, the ELL departments diligently administered access tests across all three, access tests across all three school buildings. Approximately 80 students were identified as English language learners, underwent evaluation spanning from kindergarten through eighth grade. The access test serves as a comprehensive measure of students' English proficiency encompassing reading, writing, speaking, and listening skills crucial for academic and social integration within the school environment. Last year, 14 students made successful transitions from the ELL program, representing substantial strides in their language learning journey. As we press on with our efforts, it is crucial to acknowledge that among these 14 students, we are presently progress monitoring a total of 19 students who have exited the ELL program. Across all three schools, we currently service 85 ELL students. Allow me to provide you a snapshot of the ELL demographics across our schools. At MES, we started the year with 30 ELL students, with an additional six students joining our district. Notably, we welcomed a newcomer from the Ukraine, enriching our cultural tapestry. Currently, we are privileged to service 36 ELL students at MES. At MIS, we started the year with 13 ELL students, with three newcomers joining us from Costa Rica, Colombia, and Venezuela. Presently, we are supporting 16 ELL students at MIS, fostering an inclusive learning environment. At the junior high, we began the year with 26 ELL students. Throughout the year, seven new students enrolled, representing a diverse backgrounds from Guatemala, Costa Rica, and Venezuela. Despite the transient nature of student populations, we are currently entrusted with the education of 33 ELL students at MJHS. These figures highly, these figures highlight the fluidity of our ELL department and the evolving composition of our student body. It is essential for us to remain flexible and responsive, guaranteeing that each ELL student is equipped with the assistance and tools needed to excel academically and in their broader pursuance. As the year continues, we will continue to empower and uplift our English language learners, fostering a community where every student can flourish regardless of their linguistic background. Thank you.
Okay, I have to start off by saying, we are third grade. I have to start off by saying how amazing it was to see the fourth grade reading their poems today. It really warmed some of our hearts and brought tears to our eyes because I know one of the students, she barely spoke in my room last year in third grade and she stood up here Windsor Diamond and was loud as could be. Another one who didn't speak any English last year in Mrs. Hernandez's class as she cried and listened to her speak and do her poem in English. So, it was just really nice to see that, nice surprise. So, the third grade dream team here would like to take you on a curriculum adventure, starting with social studies. Third graders are currently learning about maps, globes, continents, and oceans. Students are participating in collaborative group work to make community maps.
Third graders in science are currently discussing the differences between climate and weather. We just did an activity where we kind of analyzed the pattern, the weather patterns to determine the best place for our snow fort contest. And we are currently creating a climate map, a world climate map, so they can kind of observe the patterns all over the world.
Our students spend a good chunk of the first half of the year in math, developing their foundation with multiplication and division, both the basic facts and the understanding of how they relate to each other. And all of this has prepared them for our current module, which is all about fractions. We are working on comparing fractions, plotting fractions on a number line, and identifying fractions greater than one pole.
Our social-emotional learning, we utilize the second step curriculum weekly for our social-emotional lessons. They are connected with our second step curriculum and also connected with our EL curriculum, which is new. It's embedded in our EL lessons to give examples of what it looks like to have good habits of character and what they look like in the classroom. This connects our PBIS school-wide goal of being kind to others, being the yellow. Our student council sold heartograms, which we do as a third grade kind of wrap-up each year, just third grade, where they buy, it's connected with our American Heart Association Heart Challenge with the PE department. And the students wrote kind messages to classmates in third grade and we raised over $600 to add to that total curriculum, just from third grade, so.
During our win time, that is a what I need time, students receive their intervention services at that time with students that are in the classroom, with their teachers, they're participating in novel studies. And we are utilizing our EL standards from our ELA curriculum to guide our questioning or identifying the central message, reading complex texts, answering comprehension questions, and conducting character studies during this time.
And as you know, we are, this is our second year with the 95% phonics program. So, as a grade level, we are noticing that our students are beginning to apply or are applying their phonics skills to find meanings of unknown words and using various morphemes that we've learned so far. They are also using their context clues as they read more complex text, like as in our EL series, where they're much more complex. And then they're able to use that and they've made great growth and have really excelled in their encoding and decoding.
For ELA, we are in the process of wrapping up our module two for the EL curriculum. Students do a lot of close reading, which takes a long time for us to really dig into like literally a page of text. We're analyzing texts about frogs. Students are participating in peer editing and revising with their informational paragraphs, so they'll collaborate with each other and say like, oh, I think you need to add this or that. We will end the unit by making a freaky frog research book and a trading card, which is kind of like the Pokemon, how you have like similar, you know, where the points are for their frog. They have to do points for camouflage, for poison, for color, for size. So, that's where we're headed next. Highlight of our module is we have the frog lady. We had this frog lady assembly. This woman was so amazing and she truly loved her job. The kids were fascinated, it was really cool. It was so fun and informative. We are looking forward to possibly seeing a play for our module three, Novel Study of Peter Pan, or maybe a field trip to Disney World to see the Peter Pan ride? I mean, I'm just going to say it. Or to just see the parade with Peter Pan, like it connects.
Okay, moving on. We will move on. We've got a couple of discussion items. Let's first start with a review of closed session verbatim recordings. Anna is going to kick us off as the secretary of the closed session.
Okay, so I think that what the discussion, Anna, was going to be you explaining the process that yourself and Lisa did when you went through the meeting minutes. So, that I am not prepared to discuss. It was my understanding that we were discussing your process. And when you say that the process has been you for the past 11 years and Lisa, you know, we have a new board that came on in April of last year. So, there are things that us as a board should be deciding, you know, as a board, who is representing the board in these individual tasks. Another example is the insurance committee, that we as a board should be at an open meeting deciding who will be performing that task on behalf of the board. So, it's news to me that you and Lisa are doing this and I'm just...
No, 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 it's not news because you had asked me about that before and I had told you how the process worked. And I told you that's how it's been from the day, day one of meeting on the board 11 years ago.
So, it's, when you told me that at that time, that was in September, shortly after we got on, and you're right, you did tell me that. It was my understanding at that point that it was part of the positions you were serving as board vice president and secretary. So, I misunderstood that to be a function of your position as secretary and vice president. Now, I can see clearly that is not what that is. So, my question is, you know, well, I guess it's really a statement that us as a board, we have not made this decision on who will perform this task. So, we should do that together and we should vote on that. And it should be, it should have been really brought up at the beginning when we were elected, before it was ever done. Now, I can see that that wasn't done. And so, my question is, when are we going to do that? And while we do that, what else do we need to decide? Another example that I know of now is the insurance committee, which I was told Jim Andreessen is serving on now, which again, this is just another scenario, we've never had a conversation about it. We've never, as a board, made a formal decision or had a vote on who would be serving at this. And is there any other that we don't know about?
Well, let me just say that me being the board secretary, for the closed session especially, I automatically am there. And it states here in our policy 220, individual board members may access verbatim recordings in the presence of the recording secretary, the superintendent, or designated administrator, or any elected board member. Access to the verbatim recording is available at the district's administrative offices or the verbatim recording's official storage location. Requests shall be made to the superintendent or board president. While a board member is listening to a verbatim recording, it shall not be re-recorded or removed from the district's main office or official storage location, except by vote of the board or by court order. Before making such requests, board members should consider whether such requests are germane to their responsibilities, service to the district, or the oath of office by policy 280. Board member oath impending. In the interest of encouraging free and open expression by board members during closed meetings, the recordings of closed sessions, closed session meetings should not be used by board members to confirm or dispute the accuracy of recollections. Now, me personally, me talking. Going through closed session recordings, which contain confident and sensitive information regarding our children and our staff, does not sit well with me. I'm not understanding what you're looking for by going back into our closed session. I know we have the rights, right? But it's very unsettling. You weren't on the board and you want information. You want to listen to information that doesn't pertain to what is happening today, right? Information discussed in those sessions about our students and our personnel, I feel is germane to what is on the agenda, like I said, today. Our students and personnel matters that you are specifically requesting is an invasion of our students and personnel's privacy. And I feel that if that's something a board member requests, we are a board of seven, and I think the board needs to agree or not that you should go back in there. We have enough to focus on in the present. So, going into the past is very, it's detrimental, unless it's something very detrimental to some... Unless it's something very detrimental to something that's going on, I think we need to stay up in our balcony and not be on the dance floor. I hear a lot from our board members, some of our board members, that I have rights. What about my rights? And I'm going to ask of our board, my board members, let's not forget about the rights of our students and our staff's privacy as well. Speaking into former recordings. Because they can have their privacy rights as well.
Okay. So I guess I'll pick up on that. I would say that this request is not illegal. It's unique. It's the first time I've heard of it in seven years on the board. So what I would like to do is take this time, and we can't do this by email because it's very difficult to do board business and conduct with all seven members. But I have heard similar concerns that Anna has made about, you know, sensitive staff information, sensitive student information that could be in these closed session minutes. So my, what I want to address is how do we grant you access, but still ensure the privacy and ensure that? You know, the policy does state about, you know, germane to business matters and things like that. But I think that we need to think about how do we do that? So you did make a couple of requests that I'm aware of. So I just want to clarify which one is, I don't want to assume that they supersede each other. The first one was closed session minutes for school year '22, '23. And then I think it followed back up with you wanted access to all 24 months? Is that, would that be the latest? No, can you clarify then what, which one you're requesting?
Yeah, it's the one that, I would like to listen to the, to the recordings that are on our agenda to be destroyed.
Okay, so just so everyone's following along out there. So we are required to keep 18 months of closed session minutes. What's on the agenda tonight is to approve the destruction of months 19 through 24. So this is a semi-annual process that happens every six months. So 19 through 24 month, if you're following along. I love numbers, so I'm, that's what, so, okay, thank you for clarifying that. So that's what Kelly is requesting. So, um, thank you for clarifying. So I think now, I think as a board, and this is where we need to kind of discuss this. It's a unique request and I don't think we should, you know. I think we need to consult as a board. We all know our board policy states, and I think Anna said, that, you know, no one board member mandates that. So I want, you know, kind of get the feel of the board. I know there's concerns. So how do we address, you know, how do we grant access, but then ensure safety of the sensitive information that the board is comfortable with? So I guess reach out to the board and say, how do we do this? I think that there was, I don't think, there was a proposal by Dr. Cohen to you to have himself and Lisa to toss out some dates. And then I believe you countered with you and Julie, we're going to show up to review them. So I just want to, you know, so those are the facts. I think those are, would you agree or?
Well, okay, there's a couple, I think, misconceptions here. One is, just so everybody understands what we're talking about, what I requested is a right provided to me in the Illinois Open Meetings Act. So it says specifically that any duly-elected board member, or official is the word used, is that any duly-elected official can request access to verbatim recordings. So when we go into closed session, when the board goes into closed session after our normal open board meeting, those are recorded. And the recordings to what Eric said are kept for 18 months. And then they're destroyed. So as a new board member, the law gives any board member really access to go back to listen to the recordings and anybody that's appointed to a board, you know, newly-appointed. The law is very specific that there's no parameters. There's no requirements other than I have to access those in the presence of either the, I'm going to read the law. I have to access those in the, in the presence of, give me a second here. In the presence of the Record Secretary, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe is Mrs. Height, is that right? So you're the Record Secretary and an administrate, not and, either the Record Secretary and administrative official of the public body, which I'm assuming would be Dr. Cohen. And the other option is any other duly-elected. So in my request, I said, I would like to access the verbatim recordings that the board is set to vote to destroy, basically before they destroy them. This is a closed session that was just prior to me getting on the board. So I would like that background knowledge. The law affords me that right. There's no other stipulation except I access them in the presence of one of these three possible people. So when I sent my request, I had arranged with Ms. Oost that she would accompany me. My request was denied, which is not in compliance with Illinois Open Meetings Act. So there's no stipulation. The board cannot come up with terms that they find agreeable to provide me the access. It, this is, it can't be constrained in any way, in other words, right? So, and this is the law. It's very black and white. It's very clear. The Illinois Attorney General is the one that governs both FOIA requests and open meeting. And there's very specific laws that govern this. So I put in my request, it was denied, which is not right. And now what we are discussing is the board is deliberating on rules of engagement to protect confidentiality that I have a right to access. I already have a right. There's nothing that needs to be confidential from me. There's nothing that Ms. Briscoe can see and hear that I can't. So what you're telling me is you're concerned about student privacy, that you can hear it. And that's okay.
I was there.
But it doesn't matter. The law is very clear. So...
And I understand that.
So what you're suggesting is that...
It was your approach to the board. You demanded, you didn't, you didn't request. It was like a demand and you said, Julie and I are going. You didn't ask.
Well, I don't need to ask. I get the access.
No, you did, we're more seven.
I don't need permission. I don't need permission.
As a board, if you want to be a unified board, you do need to ask permission.
I'm not...
You do.
Well, Anna, you can access it and you didn't ask anybody's permission. You were listening to it and you didn't, I didn't even know you were doing it.
I don't listen to them. I don't.
What, so I have to ask permission, but you don't?
She didn't listen to the, she did not listen to them. She's telling you she didn't listen to them.
You didn't listen to the recordings?
No, she didn't.
I thought you were the one that came up with those were the ones that we're going to get.
Kathy comes up with the ones that get destroyed. And then we approve them.
I think there's been a small bit of confusion. When they meet, there are, there are the minutes and there are the recordings. The minutes are kept and either they are permanently closed or they are opened up for the public to see. So for example, if we have closed session minutes, verbatim recordings, but minutes about personnel or student matter, those would be, would remain closed. But if, let's say we were selling a piece of property and negotiating the price of property, after three years that, you know, that discussion becomes moot, those can be opened up. When they meet with Lisa and, when Lisa and Anna meet with Kathy, they're making recommendations, they go through it. Should we close these permanently or can we open them up? Generally, I look at them and then those are, so those are the minutes. The verbatim recordings, to the best of my knowledge, are just there and nobody ever really listens to. I, it's the first time I've heard of anybody requesting to listen to them. So just to make, just to try to...
Kelly, may I step in, please? I want to be very clear before this gets turned into too mudslinging. Is Kelly reached out to me with a concern that her request, the dates that were given to her were after the potential destruction. I said, I would go if it was going to be before the potential destruction, if there was no other availability. I did not ask her what she wanted. I told her, I don't want to know what you are looking for. But I looked at the law and that is why I agreed to whatever she wants to do. You know, because that's what she is afforded, okay? So before this gets into some, I have something that I am looking to do. No, she reached out, asked me if I had availability to sit and fulfill this. I said yes. I understand your concern about confidentiality. I think the best way to handle that is to ensure that our district attorney chimes in on the answer and ensures that if this goes forward, that it is crystal clear that the confidentiality must be kept. I believe Mrs. McMillan is aware of that. But I just want to be clear, from my standpoint, I have no, nothing that I am looking for. I was a body in a room to fulfill this request because the dates that were given were after the destruction. So if you have any questions about why I am there, please direct them to me and I would be more than happy to answer them.
My last thought on that, sorry, is we have, we have Dr. Cohen and our administration. We have a job to do. And for you to demand for them to sit in and not do their job for all the hours that you want to listen to, I can understand. I would better understand it if it was just a couple of days that you were wanting to listen to or a really good reason that is pertaining to our agenda today. But I don't understand why you're going to take Mark and whoever else our administration time away from their job.
Okay, can I address that? So I'm not, okay? It's not going to take anybody's time. The only ones that it will take would be Julie and I.
You can't go in there without our superintendent.
That's not true. That's not true. It's not true. There's two people and me and Julie are going to do it. So we were not taking any time away from our administration. And I, like I said, I am a board member. I have access to the same confidential material as anybody sitting at this table. You can't protect confidential material from me just because you don't want me to see it or hear it.
There's nothing I'm afraid of, that you seeing or hearing. It's just the time.
There is no time, Anna. He doesn't have to be in there with me. No one has to be in there with me.
So I guess, a couple of things I'd like to point out. When you made the request to show up at 1:00, it was less than 24-hour notice. So I'm not sure Kathy, I think that's a lot to ask Kathy to turn that around in less than 24 hours to have all of that material ready to go for you. Second thing that I'd like to say is, I'm happy to postpone or table the vote tonight so you have access to these things. But you never know, you never told us that you didn't, Dr. Cohen said three times out, you never told us that those didn't work for you or you had concerns. Julie just said you had concerns with those. It would have been nice to know that those concerns, and I have no problem tabling the destruction till next month to give you access. But you didn't tell anyone you had concerns. Dr. Cohen reached out and picked out the first three dates that he could attend that he tossed out there. So I guess I'm confused on why, I mean, all you had to do is tell us, I guess. And I'd say, okay, great, we'll push it back. But I didn't know that, we didn't know that. I also want to make sure that we understand that, you know, there are concerns about confidentiality. I get that you guys understand that. So when we grant this, it would be nice, you know, we need to know who is going to be there. I think there's conflicting law. We have board policy, there's law, there's other things like that as far as who that board member could be. I think all that the board member is saying is that we need to act as a board of one, all seven of us, no individual speaks. And we would like to, I believe, I'm speaking for everybody, so please speak up. If I'm, I'm trying to rehash what I've, the concerns I've heard is that the board would like to make sure that, in order to ensure confidentiality, that we're all in agreement on which board member will go in there with you to ensure that. Because there is very specific things in here. You can't record, you can't do things like that. So I think, at least I've heard concerns, and please correct me if I'm wrong, board members, about how to ensure that this information stays confidential.
Okay, so, all right, I'm going to respond. I, okay. I have texted you, I have called you, I have practically begged you to speak with me about this, Eric, multiple times over the past week. So for you to say that I didn't tell you something, I think is not fair. I have attempted to connect with you and I've been overly communicative. So if anything was questioned, I didn't hear any of this until this moment. So if you want to encourage communication, perhaps we can have a two-way dialogue here because I wanted to communicate and you were not calling me back.
Because I cannot speak on behalf of the board. I took an oath. I am one board member. I'm not going to speak for these other six board members at this table. So no, I'm not going to sit there and say that it's got to be this way, this way, this way. So I were having a discussion. What does the board want to do? Does the board want, if the board wants to sit there and agree that you and Julie can look at them together, that's fine. That's not what I was hearing that there was concerns on. So if that's the way the board wants to go, let's move on and we can do that. But I'm not going to speak on behalf of other board members and respond for that. So maybe by the silence of other board members, let's table it and then we'll figure out when there's some time that you can do that or the other board members should speak up and we should figure out what we're going to do to ensure the confidentiality and make sure that everyone feels comfortable.
I would prefer to table it and go with the dates that were originally presented where Dr. Cohen, if there is truly a need to listen to the recordings, because what you just said makes it clear that the board members do not trust me in the room. And while I take offense at that, I will step aside and I go back to, I would prefer that we, if the listening goes forward, as long as it's tabled and she, you know, I just don't want us to get in hot water by destroying something before she has her opportunity. I don't know the implication of that if the board can get in trouble. I read the statute saying that she's entitled to it. If we get in trouble for violating that, I, like I said, I don't know the implication to that. I would prefer to step aside and step out of the process. Again, I was trying to help and be the body in the room. I no longer want to do that because you obviously don't trust that I can sit there without recording or breaking some confidentiality. I'm disappointed in that, but I will step aside and let the process play out as it will.
I'm not sure where you heard that we don't trust you with anything. I didn't hear that from anybody.
Oh, you can ask Mr. Bush. That he said he wasn't sure that with the two people sitting in the room, that we wouldn't violate the recording or breaking confidentiality. That is what he just said.
Well, that would be any two people that would go in there.
Okay, yes, so...
That's why you need an add-in. That's why we have Kathy there. And the manner of the emails was hyper-aggressive and uncultured. The reactions on a Saturday, a holiday weekend, were hyper-aggressive. The reactions on a Saturday, a holiday weekend, were hyper-aggressive and uncalled for. If people wanted to read minutes and they had some valid concerns and they wanted to listen, we've protocol for a neutral third party in the room. And all my time, I can't think of anybody that were going back and listened, but the minutes are there to see exactly what's going on. We are dealing with children, we're dealing with staff. And we're dealing with things that are private nature and that's in some. And some of those things, to protect people's privacy, when it is not the current business at hand, I don't see the need. If the minutes are good enough to satisfy. But the hyper-aggressive nature of what I'm seeing in communications lately, I wish we can be better.
So I guess I, I agree with Julie in the sense that I think we should table the, the destruction of the minutes for, or the recordings for months 19 through 24. The unfortunate thing now, Julie, is that those dates that were provided are no longer available with Dr. Cohen, a week later, they're, they're just not available. So I think that what we can do is to afford, Mrs. McMillan, the opportunity to look at those, or look, listen to those recordings, that we table a discussion, we have another month, we can arrange, we can try to figure out a time when those months 19 through 24, just to be clear, you're looking for 19 to 24 in this request, right? Not months 1 through 18, just 19 through 24.
Where am I to reference what months, when we say 19 through 24? What, what do I, what am I looking at to see that?
Whatever's being destroyed tonight.
2019.
So, I mean.
The memo was in the board packet, had the dates.
Yeah, those are one.
The April, May, June, April, May, June, July, August, right?
April 202.
April 2022 through August 10.
April 22 through.
On page 244.
There's a couple of things I would like to come, the opportunity to comment on. So first of all, there was a sense of urgency. I will, I will agree that, that there was a sense of urgency because the meetings and the recordings that I was requesting to listen to and unlawfully denied by Mr. Bush were set to be destroyed. So, Mr. Bush, you sent me an email saying that the will of the board is to not proceed with my request to listen to the recordings. So that is the denial. And in that email, you said that it was the will of the board that decided that you would not proceed with my request to let me listen to the meetings.
Yes, and I already familiar with what the will of the board is. The will of the board is the majority of the board. So the majority of the board, as I heard it, was there was concern about how do we keep this private? This was a request that no one has ever seen before and it's a sensitive information. So yes, we put this on the agenda specifically before the vote. Let me be clear, we did not vote before this discussion was held. We knew that going in, that we could do that and then have that. So we had this discussion before your rights were violated in any manner as far as destruction of the minutes. I am following the will of the board again. We took an oath, it doesn't matter if I'm okay and you are okay with it. If four of the board members aren't okay with it, I have to follow the will of the board. There was concern about how do we keep that confidentiality. I didn't have an answer for it. I didn't think that it was in my place to speak for all the other board members. You kept emailing and you kept, yes, to Jim's point, you kept on. I'm not going to speak for them. I knew that we could discuss it tonight before the destruction. And what I'm saying now is, just like, this is why we had the discussion. We can table the destruction until we can figure out how the board wants to proceed with giving you access, but also comfort that the board feels that sensitivity of the staff and students will be maintained. That's what I'm trying to.
What you were technically denied was just that day you kind of demanded to go into the office, just that day. And the rest of the board was like, whoa, wait a minute, we've never had this done, we need to talk about this. And that, so that's what you were just denied, not, not to never go in there, let's be clear about that.
Well, that wasn't clear, and again.
No, they gave you three dates. Eric, in that email, gave you three dates.
So that was before.
After our board meeting.
The chain, the chain progressed and the denial came after the three dates, right? So, so it wasn't clear. And again, if, if we want to talk about, you know, communication, it wasn't for my lack of trying, right? So my emails were not responded to, so I tried again. Like, that's what was happening. I was texting, I was asking, you know? And, and again, the reason was because of the timing of this meeting. That's the reason. If we had more time, it wouldn't have been like that. But the timing of the reason, of the timing of the meeting and the fact that the vote was going to happen to destroy the, the records that I was requesting. But I just want to reiterate one more time. This, this concept that the board needs to agree to some rules of engagement that I need to follow as it relates to this is, is not, is not on the table. I mean, the law affords me this, there's no stipulation and, and our policy affords me this and there's no stipulation. So with the exception of, like I said, you know, one person going in with me. So I don't want, and I, I never wanted, and I do not want currently for Dr. Cohen or anybody else from the district to be bogged down, sitting there with me. And they don't need to be. And as a board, we're, we already have a policy. That doesn't say that. So I, I just don't understand how you guys are talking about adding another stipulation. Where does this fit in? There, you, you know, you're deciding rules as we go, like, how can that be? That, that, we have a policy and there's a law, so.
Kelly, you're not understanding. Alls, alls he did was ask the board, because we've never done this before. He said, okay, the will of the board is like, we need to have a discussion. He sent out three dates for you to go listen to them after tonight's meeting. I don't know what part of that you're, that means we can't destroy them if you're going to go listen to them. So I'm not understanding what you're not understanding. Three dates were sent out tomorrow and then two other dates.
Okay.
To come for you to commit.
So I'm, I'm, I'm past that, I'm moving forward. I'm talking about, what we're talking about now is the board coming up with new rules that apply. And alls I'm saying is that we can't just come up with new rules that apply when we already have a policy that says how it works and when there's always, there's already a law that says how it works. So we already have two overarching things that say how it works. And now I don't understand how we're just adding, adding rules as we go.
It's called no surprises. That was a surprise.
If I, if I can, the original request, and I just, just as a point of order, the original request for, was for to listen to the closed session minutes and recordings from school year 22, 23. Those meant, those recordings are not up for destruction tonight. Those are only, the oldest is 17 months old, those wouldn't be destroyed for another six months. So I did email you on behalf of Eric with three dates that were after today, but at that point, your request was, those minutes, those recordings were not going to be destroyed, so it didn't matter. You then modified your request to listen to the ones that are being destroyed, in which Eric said, well, we'll talk about that at the last, at the next meeting. Just know I did talk to counsel about this because I had also never been a part of this type of request. And he was clear that these, the recordings are board minutes and therefore the board has a, has the right to make the decision about how, when and where access is granted, maintain security. So that gives the seven of you the right to determine who will be the person in the room. It was his opinion that it is not up to an individual board member to decide who it is that they would like to, like, how they will access, that's a board decision, how they will access. And that's the opinion from counsel.
I move to table the review of closed session verbatim recording discussion.
Second.
Well, so I appreciate that, but we're not at the voting thing yet. So when we get to that, when we get to that part of the agenda, we can make that motion to table, but we're not there yet. So there was still then discussion on, on this item. So I'm happy to entertain that when we get there, but I would respectfully ask that you guys just. All right, so in wrapping up this discussion, I think I'm in agreement that yes, you had totally have access to those minutes. The question is, how and where does that occur? So I'm not sure, Ed, if we don't decide that tonight, I don't know how we're going to decide that. By, do we just do email, what does the board want me to do?
We can't conduct business via email, we have to have these kind of conversations in public to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, so, all right, that's two.
Agreed, agreed, yes.
So we're going to, so we decide tonight? Okay, so then are we in a position to state who should be with Ms. McMillan when she reviews these recordings? Are we all in agreement of who, are we going to vote on that? Kelly, are you okay with?
I'm trying to understand what you're proposing we vote on. We are not in a position on the agenda, nor do we have anything in front of us that a formal vote would be applicable.
Trying to propose a solution to end this discussion, grant you access, figure out who is going to go in the room with you when you listen to those recordings so that the two or three or whoever it is can start working together to set some dates that will work so that by the next board meeting, we can then destroy these six months worth of minutes, recordings, sorry, I keep saying minutes, recordings, so that we can move forward. So that's all I'm trying to say, because if we leave here tonight and, and what I'm hearing is, we don't want to do this by email again, and that's the problem we had last time, everyone's email, you're emailing, 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 and people don't want to do that. So if we don't leave tonight, we're at least picking who's going to be in that room with you, we're going to have to table it again next month. So all I'm trying to say is, the endless, and let's move on, is we've got to figure out who those people are, the three of those people, whoever it is, can figure out the dates, separate of everybody else, and get it done by next month, and on we go. Trying to propose a solution to move on. It's already 8:23, these people are bored out of their minds, listening to this. So that's, so if, if everybody's in agreement, let's try to figure out who's going to be in that room and then, does that make sense? Is that, does everyone agree with that? So then that, the way those three people can figure it out, get it done, all righty. So with that said, who's going to be in there?
Mrs. Briscoe.
These are those from Mrs. Briscoe.
I'll hear that. Who has the availability? I mean, I certainly don't want Dr. Cohen to be bogged down, but who has the most availability or flexibility?
I am, what, I'm good on Mondays and Wednesdays for sure, but I can pick any day.
So that's fine, so I can work it out with you, that's fine.
So, so I, I think, understanding your request better now, that it's not all 24 months that you want to listen to at one time, it's just these six months, I think is not going to be that big of a time consumer. But if you do 24 months at an hour or two each time, you're talking 24 to 48 hours potentially of, of listening to recordings. So that, that is, so if we're just doing these six, I think that between yourself and if it's Anna, and then if that's the case, if that's how the board wants to go, it has been past board practice that you always have a third person in the room just in case that there's any disagreements.
Happy to do it, it's, I have availability on Monday and Wednesday, the first week of March.
So let me ask this, if I'm a staff member for the board to move on, is the board happy with Dr. Co, if it's Mrs. McMillan, Mrs. Briscoe and Dr. Cohen? Is the board okay with those three people proceeding?
I don't think Dr. Cohen should, should, I don't think it would be worthy of his time to be doing this.
Okay.
I don't think it's a good use of his time, in other words.
I would say if it can't be Dr. Cohen, then it should be him, it should be one of, one of them. They have, you have availability.
I'd rather, I mean, you should help them.
I'm on vacation next week, so that's out. It's not the first week of March, so.
So I would say that we are kind of, Mark's our employee, Kathy's Mark's employee. So to request Kathy's time, I think you need to think about Mark.
Well, she's the recording secretary, right?
That's right.
Technically not during closed session.
Right.
Yes, during closed session is not.
According to board policy, the board policy says a recording secretary, so.
Recording secretary, that's, that's Mrs. Briscoe in closed session.
That's me, during closed session, I'm the one recording the minutes.
So is that what this means, okay. So that's.
I think, I think what it boils down to is, the folks that were present two years ago already know this information and we're trying to keep the circle small and not have anybody, like, you know, Kathy wasn't present, we're trying to avoid having any other people that don't need to hear that information, hear that information.
So I do want to say, right now while we're discussing it, I will, I will follow up after this, I think it'll be fast. I think my instinct right now says I could probably do this in one day, all, all six. So I don't want to belabor it. But right after that, I will put in a request where I'd originally started to listen to closed session where we were, you know, talking about Dr. Cohen's evaluation.
Okay.
For, you know, in the past, so that'll be my follow-up.
Yep. Our request I'd make is just try to specify which months. So this is April through August, so if you want, if there's a specific month, September or whatever, just so we can get those ready, then that, that's my own request.
I think Dr. Cohen, you've already sent me what those are, right? So Dr. Cohen has that information.
Those two months?
Yeah, he knows what's on there.
Okay. All right, so, depress. Kelly, Anna, Dr. Cohen.
I'm on it, I'm on it.
All right? Okay, wow, got through it. Okay, any other discussion? I shouldn't have even said that, no, we're good, right? All right. Superintendent, Dr. Cohen.
Try to follow that up.
We still have an item to take.
I did skip over B, sorry, there's another discussion. Board of Education, Public Engagement and Outreach Opportunities and Possibilities. So that was something that was brought up in the workshop as well. Natalie Williams just had mentioned that, you know, she didn't mention any specifics, but this is a follow-up to that, I imagine. So if there's any discussion or anyone to discuss things, I guess now would be the time to discuss that.
Given the, how long it took us to get through this, would, would it be okay if, I believe it was Mrs. McMillan that put this on for discussion, I think it's a worthy discussion, no doubt, but would, would you be willing to move this to the next open session, Kelly, so we can move on to the information reports?
So yes, I will. And can we, is it reasonable to ask each board member to come with maybe two ideas next month that we can, so just to let everybody know, one of the things that we brought up that was a goal for our next steps was to identify and discuss opportunities to connect with our community more and our parents. And so that is the, the goal of the agenda item now. And so I would just request that maybe we can get each board member and Dr. Cohen to come with two suggestions to the next meeting to discuss.
Sure.
Any further discussion on that topic? Okay, now, Dr. Cohen.
So start, like, to start by thanking the teachers who came here today and their students for presenting their poems. Takes a lot of courage for those young, young kiddos to come up here and speak so publicly about things that are very personal to them. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Roland Is, Nasreen Al-Takreti and Israel Smith for their selection for those who excel awards. There are 860 approximately school districts in the state, many of which are much larger than us, but we had three recipients of, out of about 500 across the state. Dr. Roland Is for his work as an administrator. And Nasreen is an early career educator and, and Israel Smith is a community volunteer. All of their work is appreciated and to make Mokina a better place to work and to, and to learn. Got an email on Friday. Got an email on Friday, it was a little disheartening how to hear how close we were. We had a, I inquired with the State Board of Education about the National Blue Ribbon Award. The U.S. Department of Education gives those awards out annually to schools that perform highly, and Mokina Junior High had a, had a wonderful, just a stellar year. Coming to find out, we were zero point one percent away from one threshold, one indicator, from being a U.S. Department of Education Blue Ribbon School, zero point one percent. That's probably one kid, one question. So it really, we were so close, but I'm, you know, kudos to them for, for, for making it that far, and hopefully we continue to push up. Welcome to Megan, thank you very much for being here and for coming back, welcome home. It is wonderful to have you back, we're looking forward to it. That concludes my report.
Any questions, Dr. Cohen? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Dr. Johnson.
Good evening again, this month I provided an update regarding our February professional learning that took place this month. I gave a recap of the first semester of our new ELA curriculum and what that looked like for students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. As you got to see tonight, some of our wonderful poets and their public speaking skills and the meaningful work that they had done in their classrooms during that first module. I also provided an update regarding our sixth through eighth grade ELA pilot and where we are in the process for that. We hope next month to have an initial recommendation for you in our next steps. I provided an update regarding where we are in our advanced learner programming strategic goal and our work with Northwestern Center for Talent Development. I gave an update regarding the spring assessments that are to take place, or actually have started as our EL teachers integrated with access most recently. And I also provided for you a look at the work that our instructional coaches do as it relates to the school improvement planning goals that we have this school year. Last year I provided some information about their work as it comes to students' coaching cycles and the work they do in the classrooms with the teachers. So this year I thought I'd give you the lens of another side of their role and the work that they do as it relates to the school improvement goals that our schools have to address.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Johnson? Okay, moving on, this is Volpe.
Hi there, I am so excited that we actually had an opportunity to start our transition planning that for a whole day, a week and a half ago, which is coming again Friday. We've been really preparing already for next year. I've been meeting with some special education departments, administrators, related services staff to look at the number of students as we're moving them up, and giving plans for how we plan to service them, and we're happy to make sure that we can even and also provide some information on professional development our department provided over the last month, and an update on some staffing, which included finding a real line in-person school psychologist. Trying to keep all the positions filled.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Volpe? Okay, moving on, Dr. Shaw.
I have a couple of personnel. I would also like to welcome, I had a quick sin in my mind, I have to go to school. And I also like to take a second to say congratulations to administrative assistant payroll bookkeeper Diana Lopez Spokeney and our transportation coordinator Urban Walker, who will be presenting a statewide IASBO Bookkeepers Conference in March on payroll and transportation best practices. But I'm very happy for those two. Tonight we've got action item on the purchase of two gasoline buses for next year, and information items that I've attached for you are information that next month I'll be asking the board to issue two RFPs, one for CO coding, striping, and patching parking lots, and one for our summer twenty twenty-four flooring projects. And then you have a very busy presentation month from me next month. We will have a capital improvement plan with the architects and engineers. We'll have the annual board policy for thirty-five, eliminating rates, revenue fund twenty-one presentation. We will also have five-year financial projections, we do that every year in March. And then we'll have guest presenter on the debt service, cleaning out the debt service fund thirty. So all of those things coming up.
And a finance committee meeting.
And a finance committee meeting on Monday, March eleventh. Those topics will include the five-year financial projection, the capital plan, mandated fund twenty-one report, and we'll also include a couple of the big student fees, we'll take a look at the student fees and that spreadsheet, and then an overview of all of fund twenty, which will include fund twenty-one. We'll also have the same presenter on our financial advisor from PNA, PNA Financial Advisors, Bob Lewis will be with us in finance committee also, talk about how they use the, they know the debt service fund thirty.
Okay.
They, they primary committee, a lot of stuff coming up.
Stuff, any questions for Dr. Shaw?
Um, Dr. Shaw, for the, I had asked this, and you responded, thank you for your response, regarding the MIS, MES, and MIS CO coding. So is the, is what you're estimating for the, the total for both would be under fifty thousand, is what you're thinking?
I think the overall, the patching and the metro parking lot, our estimates were around twenty to twenty-two for each, but we're also going to include metros because metros are our, our property. And when you look at the metro parking lot, there's catching and everything else. And if we're going to CO code, we CO coding there also to all of it. And so then we are on a maintenance program of every five years, instead of doing pieces, we'll do all of it from Metro through MES, go to MMS, all those things.
So that was how it was?
Over fifty thousand, under fifty thousand, you can get close to forty-two, normally full fillers, that's your footprint. If you give it the under fifty thousand, we include all of it, you have to think over that. Plus we've got a saving contractor onsite, really important, in my place for preparing the family, we've got road students, really helping kids and families scale, so it'll probably be a little bit closer.
So the, the timing of MIS and MES prior to this year was off.
Five years, they were.
They were always off a year.
And so really kind of twenty twenty-five would be your five-year window. We did the curb and gutter, so we took out eighteen inches of asphalt between the curb and gutter. So we've got different colors right on the drive because of the curb and airport that we did last year. So that'll make the roads more consistent during that CO coding.
We also had a couple water main breaks out there where we had to patch. And as far as the metro lot goes too, technically, we do have a lease agreement with, because Metro uses our property, they installed the lot, the village maintains the lot on behalf of Metro. There is, you know, there is an agreement that they would do that work, and I'm working with John Tomasowski, the village administrator, to see if they can chip in, but I do know that they paved the front street lot, the metro lot is not drawing any revenue, it's not drawing any cars for the, for the train station. There may be a point in time where that lease agreement disappears, in which case it would, the maintenance would fall back to us. In an ideal world, we'd, you know, try and get this done, but I know sometimes the wheels of, of these entanglements go slowly, especially when we're dealing with an organization like Metro, but the parking lot's in really bad shape. So if they're not, if Metro's not going to use a lot, I would love to be able to clear all those extra concrete moorings out of there, take down all those, you know, numbers and signage and all that, and address it up. But we're going to, that's going to be probably a slower process.
Hey. Hello, good evening, welcome, thank you, I like to tag along with that. I only had two items, one of them being an information item. We did receive a quote from Urban Communications, which our network vendor we chose, Ruckus, highly recommended we use, very reasonable price. I believe there will be some cost savings, so hopefully when we turn this into an action item next month, the cost will be significantly less. I also talked about the teacher laptop refresh and our two plans the tech department are going to go with, one being, three of us will be, will be attending brainstorm this year, and at the vendor session, we'll try to get our hands on as many devices as possible to see if we can, see if something stands out that would work best for the district. If not, we plan on looking at the upgraded beefier model of the, the current laptops the teacher has, so it'd be the newer version that's a little bit better, plus some warranty on it as well, and it would still come just, it'd still be under budget if we won't have option B too. So that is all I had on my report, any questions?
Okay, no questions? All right, principal reports. Uh, who wants to go first? I'll go with Mrs. Chorley.
Um, I'd like to say thank you to the first graders for being here tonight. Very, very proud, that was a great performance, so proud, so great. Along with that, I want to recognize Mrs. Hernandez and Mr. Schindler, because one of those students here tonight reading her poem spoke no English last year, and when she came to us, and Mrs. Hernandez implemented all the great strategies that Mrs. Schindler had provided with her, we equipped them with the right tools. Dr. Johnson was a great support as well, and to see her stand up and present a poem that she wrote was like, we were both cheering, I'm just so proud of her, so. Very proud of all the four graders, because those are our guests too, but, but that one in particular was very powerful. I'd like to just kind of acknowledge Steve Dimmelhauser, on open point, made forty thousand dollars, but we were right there with it's hard challenge. Really amazing what he does every year for this wonderful organization. So very, very proud of him and everybody that supported it. Our playground this afternoon, I had to stay with the nice weather, there were so many families outside today on our new playground, and it's such a great community gathering place for the kids and the parents, and I just wanted to share that with you, because, you know, we wouldn't, they wouldn't be out there like that if there wasn't more your approval and your support and the, you know, the, the Dr. Cohen taking the lead on it, so. It was, it's just really so great to see everybody out there. At our staff meeting, not yesterday, but not last week, but before, our teachers stood up, and it was their idea to present to each other what their students were doing in the curriculum. I have to say that I was so proud, it was so exciting, because they were sharing what all of their students are doing and their excitement, which is so great to see. I'm so proud of the teachers, and I'm so proud of the students, and how they've really risen to this increased.
Not a question, but I just wanted to give a shout out to first grader Edmund Nelson as well. She, and Mrs. Arduino just left, so he's in her class. He was one of the top three entries for the fire department coloring contest, so that was cool. Yeah, that's really cool, thanks.
Anything else for Mrs. Chorley? Okay, Mr. McAtee. Up there. Any questions for Mr. McAtee? Okay, Dr. Rolanditis?
Just a couple of things to highlight. Having my board report about the solo and ensemble contest, you know, the vast majority of our kids got a first place, and it sounds like if there was several others that didn't have a certain judge, there would have been more. But there's always one judge at those contests who likes to get twos. So that's a lot of work for those kids, and it's, it's MIS kids too, so that, that's a, a pretty amazing thing. It's just like those kids getting up there today, it's hard to sit in front, stand up in front of somebody and speak, sing, play your instrument, it's a tough thing to do. So commend all the kids who did that and the teachers that worked with them. I also want to, I know Cindy left, but Cindy Storino has done a phenomenal job with our ELL program at the junior high, and part of our success last year, a significant part of that success was our EL population doing very, very well, better than we expected on the IAR last year, so we expect the same things this year. And I think that's because of the model, thank you to Dr. Johnson putting that together, but Cindy's huge in that, making sure those kids make tremendous progress. Something I didn't put in my report is, February is transition month for Lincoln Way, so many of you know, because your kids, I think we had, had to stall a board meeting last year, because a lot of your kids were going over to Open House. But we have a great relationship with Lincoln Way. We meet, we meet regularly and talk about those transitions. This year they, their communication was fantastic. They come, they bring students over, talk to our kids, they do that several times a year to meet with our kids, to encourage them, really encourage them to do their best in high school, just continue what they've been doing here in, in Mokina. But to do that over there at, at Central, I can't say enough good things about them, and I hope our kids, it, it's weird to be doing it in February, but that's when they do their scheduling, once they do all the placements, because it takes them, a high school schedule's pretty complex to try to put together. So it takes a little time, they won't see their actual schedule until August, so, and the open. time, they won't see their actual schedule until August, so, and the open house is, was last week, was, yeah, Valentine's Day, and so there they get to go meet all the department chairs, they have a lot of questions now because of the direct placement, the law requires that they're just placed in, according to their PSAT score into whatever level classes, so there's a lot of conversations that are had over there, and one of the fun things that is absolutely overwhelming, if you've never done it, is walking around the fieldhouse, where there are, I think there are up to 90 different, or over 90 different activities, that there, it's a gauntlet as a parent and a child, because they all want your child, and there's something, if your child doesn't have something to do at Lincoln Way High School, it's their own fault, so, I, I think that's about all I have for today, thank you.
Questions for Dr. Lonitis?
I will confirm the gauntlet, they, they, if everyone's ever done it, it's tables on both sides of the indoor track, and every association have students, and they are like, in your face, join, 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 so, yeah, it's pretty impressive how many organizations Lincoln Way has that you can participate in.
On on, Mrs. Briscoe?
Good evening, everyone, welcome back, Megan, glad to have you, I think that's consensus with everybody, thank you for coming tonight. I have a little bit to report tonight on the financial side, so Pioneer Grove tuition was significantly decreased for this month, which was actually last month in January, due to both additional students compared to budget and expenditures projected to be under budget. The tuition bills sent at the beginning of January were the last month for transportation and building and grounds billings this year. Mr. Engler would expect changes to the bus monitor charges for the remainder of the year as it appears under billed, he will be reconciling this for future billing. Self is also under budget, but he is holding off on recommending any changes to that tuition yet, with the change in enrollment and additional class offering in January of 2024. Repairs and maintenance and Fund 20 continue to grow and will likely be over budget. Capital outlay is quite a bit under, so it may not be an issue, it will depend on how much capital outlay is spent between now and June of 2024. Mr. Engler is projecting transportation to be about 60K over budgets, but most of that is made up with the insurance reimbursements, and there's still one half of the year to go, he is not worried about this too much at this point. And that is it. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms.?
Could you give just a little background on the sports night that's coming up?
You know what, I'm not sure, okay, sorry, it's okay, could put me on the phone, I'll follow up with you later, thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Briscoe? Okay, we had three for your request, they were completed? Okay, then let's move to action requests. Over the previous minutes.
I move to approve minutes from January 17th, 2024, regular session and closed session meetings, and the January 31st special session and closed session meetings as presented.
Second.
Whoa, all right. Okay, got Anna's that? Any discussion? Please call them. Oh, yes.
Can I, wait, this is, is this two, both minutes, the closed session and the open session that we're approving right now? So can I move to separate the two, because I actually want to approve one, and then I had sent, I'm sorry, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit, did we get updated minutes? Okay, so, we're there, so how can I access that? Oh, they're in here, so, I'm sorry, I didn't see these, so this was amended, great. I apologize, I didn't see these approved. So, the issue right now is the changes to the open session minutes.
Okay.
I do not have access to see those changes, since I made them, so, and then the second issue is that the closed session minutes, you know, I was of the opinion that that wasn't exactly what was agreed to, I could say that I didn't agree to what was represented on those closed session minutes, so that's why I kind of want them separated, so I could just make that point, that that was not part of what I agreed to in the closed session, but at this point, I don't, I don't see the, the open session revision either.
Okay. So would Jack make them, what, you started to make a motion to separate them, but are you, you still want to make that?
Yes.
Motion to separate?
Yes.
All right, so you're making a motion to separate the regular session from the closed session minutes for approval?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, second by Ms. Oost, any discussion? Okay, so, this vote is not to approve the minutes, this vote is to approve separating them. Does that make sense?
Separating the days or separating?
Separating the minutes. Open versus closed, so if this, this passes, we will approve them separately, or we will attempt to approve them separately, if it fails, then we will continue with them consolidated for approval, or decline. Kathy, you got that and ready to go and stuff like that? Okay, let's call the vote.
Mr. Andreessen.
We were only voting to separate.
Yes.
Sure.
This is Briscoe. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan. Yes, this is Oost. Yes, this is Tony. Sure, this is Zalinski.
Yes.
Okay, they have been separated, so, we had an approval by Sam, and a second by Ms. Briscoe, so.
No, but it's by Julie.
Julie, sorry, Julie was the second, okay, so, I think at this point, the, if you want to, you can amend your proof's approval, just to do either or.
Anything for you, sir. I move to approve the open, I'm sorry, the January 17th, 2024 regular session minutes, and the January 31st special session and closed, or we're not doing the closed?
Do you want both of them together, just whether it's both of them closed?
I think, I think the, the motion was regular session and closed session, so if you want to do regular session and special session together, I think that would be, yes.
All right, I move to approve minutes from the January 17th, 2024 regular session minutes. Right?
And.
And the January 31st special session. That's it.
Yeah, second.
Second by Julie, any discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. The issue that I had was the special session, not the closed session. I misspoke, so I apologize, so, the issue that I had-
I withdraw my motion, maybe Kelly wants to make the motion.
Okay, so.
Sorry, Kathy, please.
I misspoke, I called it closed session, I meant, I meant special session.
Okay, so, we technically made a motion and we approved to separate the regular session and the closed session, so I think we need to amend that, so Kelly, if you can amend your request, I think that's the easiest way to do this.
I-
Or clarify.
I amend my request, I would like to separate the regular session on January 17th minutes from the special session on January 31st minutes, so-
With a closed session, do you want?
Closed can stay with, with the January 17th.
Okay, got it, right, so the motion is to separate the January, the January 31st special session minutes from the January 17th, the regular session minutes and closed session minutes.
Yes.
Okay, I will second that. Any discussion?
Are we really separating this with a separate motion?
No.
No.
No one knows what's going on.
Yes, we do. I will make the motion. I move to approve the minutes for the January 17th, 2024 regular session and closed session minutes as presented.
Second.
Lisa, any discussion?
No.
Wow. Okay, please call the vote.
Mr. Andreessen.
We're only approving the 17th.
No, we're two, this, oh my god.
Yes, go ahead, that's exactly what we're doing, open and close of the 17th.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan. Yes. This is Oost. Yes. This is Tony. Yes. This is Zalinski.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed for the regular and closed session minutes from the January 17th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 31st special session?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Julie, any discussion?
We are only voting to verify the minutes of January 31st special session, that's it.
Correct. Please call.
This is Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan. This is Oost. Yes. This is Tony. Yes. This is Zalinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Sure.
Wow, all right, 61, motion passed, okay, got through the minutes. District bills, Mrs. McMillan.
I move to approve the monthly bills as presented.
Second by Julie, any discussion? Please call the vote.
This is Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan. Yes. This is Oost. This is Tony. Yes. This is Zalinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, next up is personnel?
I move to approve personnel recommendations 7C, 1 through 6, as presented, successful background check is possible.
Second.
Any discussion?
Welcome to crew, happy to have you, happy to have you back.
Yep, I, I, I wanted to say welcome as well, and that I will miss a couple of the paras that are leaving, they were really great additions to the staff, but moved on to different endeavors.
And welcome to Nicole in the back.
Okay, so let's take a vote to make it official. Let's call the vote. Yes.
This is McMillan. Yes, this is Oost. Yes, this is Tony. Yes, this is Zalinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
This is Briscoe. Yes.
Okay, just when I thought we were all-
We're walking all the way, what's the question? We got jobs. Pins and needles, I know, I know.
All right, consent agenda is next.
I move to approve consent agendas, agenda items 6D, 1 through 2 as presented.
Second.
I heard Lisa first, so we'll go with Lisa, any discussion on this? No discussion, okay, please call the vote.
Mrs. McMillan. Yes. This is Oost. No. Mrs. Tony. Yes. Mrs. Zalinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
This is Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes. Okay, motion passed, next up is semi-annual review of closed session minutes.
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to open closed session minutes from January 16th, 2019, February 20th, 2019, March 20th, 2019, April 17th, 2019, and May 15th, 2019, and permanently close the December 19th, 2018 closed session minutes as presented.
All right, Jim got in there, sorry, any discussion? Please call the vote.
This is Oost. Yes. This is Tony. Yes. This is Zalinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
This is Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan. Yes.
Okay, motion passed, next up is a verbatim destruction of the closed session minutes.
Make a motion, we table this for 30 days till the following month.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Sam really wanted that one, all right, please call the vote.
Mrs. Tony. Yes. Mrs. Zalinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
This is Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan. Yes. This is Oost. Yes.
Okay, motion passed, next up is Mr. Chorley's favorite event of the night, approval of the 2024-25 school calendar.
I move to approve the 2024-25 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Second by Lisa, just for discussion purposes, it was discussion A and B, and we are approving option B today.
You took my thunder, I was gonna tease that you were gonna do A.
I know, I, 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 yes, B, so the teacher's B. Okay, please call the vote.
This is Zalinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yeah.
This is Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan. Yes. This is Oost. Yes. This is Tony. Yes.
Okay, motion passed, next up is board policy committee terms. We have a meeting, no action item on this, okay, oh, well, we got a couple options, I guess, right? All right, so, so this involves a little bit of a discussion, I guess, so I think there's some disagreement amongst the board, as far as what got approved at the November meeting, so I'd like to put that to rest tonight, so we can move forward with the policy committee changes, so I think there's a couple board members that feel like we approved not only the committee, but the structure of the committee, and I think what I've heard is four board members say that we only approved the committee, not the structure, so, with that said, there is a committee structure that Julie has presented, I'm not sure where the board stands on that, I did present two other potential solutions that are not complete, that was purely an attempt that if we do not go with Julie's, that we have something to discuss as a backup plan, so if the board is totally comfortable with Julie's plan, then we can scratch those other two, that was just meant to be some potential options to discuss if we do not go through with that, does that kind of sum up the situation to the board? Okay?
I move to approve option one, Mrs. Oost's proposed structure as presented.
Second.
Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Briscoe, any discussion? Okay, please call the vote.
Mr. Andreessen.
No.
This is Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan. Yes. This is Oost.
Yes.
This is Tony. Yes. This is Zalinski.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, so, in agreement with that, we should select the chair and vice chair this evening, well, it's not on the agenda, so I guess, all right, we'll move on then. Okay, next up, purchase of two gas buses.
I move to approve the purchase of two gas buses at a price not to exceed $247,090 as presented. Second.
Any, any discussion? Please call the vote.
This is Briscoe. Yes. Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan. Yes. This is Oost.
Yes.
This is Tony. Yes. This is Zalinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, next up is items for the March agenda. Shaw's always got something.
Yes, I talked about it a little earlier, but next month I'll be asking the board to approve two RFPs, one for the steel project, and one for the summer 24 drawing project, and then we'll have four presentations next month, capital improvement plan with the architect engineers, Fund 21 presentation, the five-year financial projections, and we'll have a guest presenter from PMA Financial, I just talked about, he's in the conference room.
Debt service fund, we have access funds in that thing, how to get rid of them?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
My department will also have an informational item regarding the sixth through eighth grade ELA next steps.
Okay, anything else?
Eric, can I add a couple things? One is, okay, so, we were, we're talking earlier about board representation on, on various committees, and having the conversation, for example, the, the board representatives that are serving in Anna's and Lisa's capacity to review the closed session minutes that are chosen- are chosen to open. And then the second example is the insurance committee. And I don't know what other things board members are besides, of course, what we voted on in our organizational meeting, what other things board members, you know, that we have to decide as a group who's going to, who's going to serve. But I would ask that it get put on the agenda for next month to go over all of the things that we need to do as a board and then decide. And that, and that would be yourself appointing the chair to the, to the policy committee also then next month. You know, we could do that all at one time.
Okay, so you propose that to be a discussion item? Same format as this other?
Well, I think that it needs to be like an action item where we lay out what, right? Because we want to vote on who the people are, don't we? Or are we doing discussion first and then action the following month?
Usually you do discussion first for one month and then action.
Okay, so we'll do.
However, however, with that said, because we just discussed the policy committee this month, that would be eligible to vote on next month.
So that's an action item?
That could, that can be an action item because we discussed it this month and approved it, so we can follow up on that one. The other items would need to be discussed and then voted on in April.
So how, I mean, I know two of the scenarios that are on this list, but I don't know, I guess my question is, you know, I mean, can we work together to develop a comprehensive list of things that I may not know that we need to do and assign board members and decide who the board members are between now and then? And then the second agenda for discussion would be the protocol for adding something to the agenda. So it was my understanding that based on the workshop we did, that we were getting a tentative agenda and that board members would have the option at that point to make suggestions or additions to the agenda for the coming meeting. Sometimes I think that's done and sometimes it's not. So I just want to understand what is the protocol and what needs to do? For board members to add something to the agenda, does it need to be brought up right now? Can it be brought up with that tentative agenda and just have one board member request it? What is, what is the protocol? So can we have a discussion or an action, maybe procedure or modification to the policy the following month?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think so. I think I got it.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay.
Sorry, I promise I'll be quick. Is this the part now where we would, just as a procedural thing, since we were, the board was removed from the public, in, under the communications in that section, would this be the appropriate time to discuss any items then?
If you wanted to discuss that, yes.
All right, cool. Thanks. I just wanted to know that for future reference because some, one of the speakers earlier had asked about that, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear. Thank you.
Yeah, next up's follow-up items. So as long as it's been discussed before, you're following up on an existing item.
Eric, I have one more thing. Dr. Cohen, we have an information item that we're on the agenda for next month, right? For the committee revision?
Yes.
So we'll, we'll have that on the agenda for next month, right?
Yeah, the board policy on board committees.
Right, okay.
For the Goodmo Kina. All right, I guess next up's follow-up items. Nothing? Okay, for the Goodmo Kina?
I have something, a few. I'm going to thank the NTA for bringing the ELL and third grade. I know that it dwindled, but it well-represented, just terrific. I really appreciate you coming. March Melody's concert is coming up. I totally just blanked on the date, but it's coming up. And then tickets for the musical are on sale, and I just wanted to make sure that folks know that tickets are on sale for Friday, March 1st, and Saturday, March 2nd. March 1st is at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, the shows are at 3:00 and 7:00 at Lincoln Way Central. Thanks.
Okay, Mrs. Blank?
I think from March that I was.
Oh, that's a tease. To get you to come. Seven days left. Okay. Anything else for the Goodmo Kina?
Thank you.
Okay. If we hear nothing else, I move that the Board of Education adjourn to closed session for purposes of the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives with no action after closed session.
Second.
Lisa?
Follow us.
Lisa? Please call the vote.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
This is McMillan.
Yes.
This is Oost.
Yes.
This is Tony.
Yes.
This is Zelinski.
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. All right, it's 9:17. Can we agree to 9:27? 9:27? It's 9:17, so 10 minutes?